Start it. Oh, sorry.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Welcome to the Norwich Slipboard meeting Wednesday, special meeting Wednesday, November 19th. The Mary Layton Chair to my left is Marcia Culloway. To my right are Chemo Rigs, Priscilla Vincent, Matt Swett, Town Manager Brennan Duffy. Welcome, everybody. On number one, the agenda, we have a request to add an item to each of them. Has to do to approve the renewal of the CD. So do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Are you going to do the agenda?
Well, first we have to decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. A little out of order. Is that amenable to everybody to add that item?
Yeah.
And are there any other items that you'd like to add or amend?
Yeah, do we have to discuss number six?
I think we do.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Shall we have that item just after public comments?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Second item is the Chair's report. It's not much.
I think we got a vote on it.
We didn't get a second or a vote.
Out of order here.
It's okay.
All right. That was moved by Matt. And who would like to second it?
Second.
Okay, and let's vote. Marcia?
Yes.
Chemo?
Yes.
Tella?
No, because of six.
Okay. No, because of six and that?
Yes.
And I, yes. Okay. Now, to the Chair's report, it's really nothing to report. We kind of created our agenda at the last meeting. So that's all set. Next is public comments for others not on the agenda. Brennan, do you?
Although it's jokes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great. Then the people on Zoom can.
Great. So my name is Miller Nudel. I appreciate the time to.
Oh.
Yes, I reached out to several of you. Hi, good to put a face faces to the names here.
I was entertained by your, your description of yourself in your email.
Oh, good. I forget what I said, but I hope it was good. So I'm, I'm here. I've been, I've been in Norwich for a few years now and Vermont for the past, since the pandemic, give or take, and have a background in bike and pedestrian and safety and public transit advocacy work in a few different cities across the US. And now that my kids are a little bit older and now both attending Mary and Cross, I have a little more time to think about how to make the community safer for people walking and biking generally. So I've been talking to some other families at pickup and drop off predominantly. There's a lot of energy for it. Obviously, people are very busy, but I think there's a lot of excitement about making especially access to the school or access to other popular community areas safer for people walking and biking. I know enough to know that I don't know like what streets make sense or what infrastructure makes sense or anything like that. But what I, the idea I've been circulating and I'll email this document to you all shortly. So maybe it could be an agenda item in a future meeting is to convene some sort of meeting or series of meetings end of this year, early next year to solicit input from the community about where they'd like to see better, safer streets for walking and biking. And, and then sort of come up with a plan engaging you all and other stakeholders throughout the community to pursue some funding, probably from the state. That seems like where most of the funding is these days to get a study in place to look at a corridor or two that could be improved with, with safety improvements. That's the general idea. I'm happy to share, we have a brief letter that sort of outlines that from some of the families I've been talking to. And I'll think I'll share that online. I know I've learned a little bit from speaking to some of you all about the sort of where we are in the budget cycle right now. And so the other thing that I wanted to highlight and start a discussion about, again, this can be at a future meeting where we have more time to air this out, is setting aside a little bit of money in next year's warrant for a match for a state grant. I think one of these studies, I spoke to the Two Rivers on a Quiche Commission. They said a study is something like eighty or ninety thousand dollars. So a local match is something like fifteen thousand dollars because it's eighty, twenty percent match. So to put that up for discussion for the community to, you know, take into consideration for next year's town meeting and all the sort of steps necessary before that. So those are the two items I wanted to discuss with you all. Again, this is mostly just to get something on an agenda for a future meeting, but I wanted to approach it and just see if you all had any questions in the meantime.
Did you say you have a, a letter that?
Yeah.
It could be submitted for the next package?
Yeah, exactly. I'm happy to hand it out to you if you want to just take one. Something in front of you now. Thank you.
Brennan, do you have a?
My only thought after hearing what you were contemplating would be to engage with the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Our director, Stephen True, is sitting behind you.
Probably part of it happened. That's correct. Yeah.
So you know each other.
Yeah.
So, so we have a couple of things going, this kind of pedestrian safety and corridor enhancement.
Yeah.
Really kind of in the lane of the Planning Commission.
Yep.
We have a grant application already out actually for something that might be similar to what you're envisioning.
Excellent. Okay.
Connectivity and trying to make, make pedestrian and bike safety.
Excellent.
Priorities. So I would, I would suggest maybe reaching out to Stephen. He could probably be a good conduit. Jan Losbeer is the Chair of the Planning Commission. He's, he's listening as well.
That sounds.
That might be a nice connection before coming back even to the Select Board would be to have that discussion with the Plan Commission.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to. I emailed you on today. So yeah, but I'll be as well. Yeah, it sounds great. So we'll, we'll take that as a next step and then from there, hopefully come back here at some point too and have a discussion about it.
Thanks.
Questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
In your thinking about this, are you thinking about only paved surfaces along roads and sidewalks? You think also things that go through the woods or across fields or?
Very, very flexible. Like really, it's about getting the community together to identify what they want to do. Yeah. 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 Great. Okay. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Any other public comments? Brennan?
I would just like to make two because we're not doing the formal.
I would just like to make two because we're not doing the formal Town Manager Report this evening. So one of them, I just wanted to alert the Select Board that I have filed with the state an application for a commercial appraisal and litigation assistance program, KALAP acronym. I did this on Monday at the advice of our council to get this in the works quickly. As you're, I think, aware, we do have a challenge or an appeal from Great River Hydro LLC. So we had reached out to SBNF for legal assistance there. They apparently spoke with the state and there is a program here that will give us some support via the state for defending the valuation of the, that appeal. So made sense, no cost to the town for this to occur. And I'm alerting you because I signed this as the Town Manager. On the form, it says signature of the Select Board Chairperson. I wanted to expedite this, so I signed it and wrote Town Manager to disclose who is signing this. If somehow the state would come back and say, no, you need the Select Board Chair to sign this in order to make it valid, I guess we could just get kind of a casual consent from the board that I would then give this to Mary to re-sign and submit. But from what I received back in acknowledgement that we had submitted and that they were going to review this, I think we're okay. I think the Town Manager is also approved entity of a municipality. So if everybody is okay, that if something happens in the future, Mary will be asked to sign this and we'll resubmit it. And that's all I wanted to do today.
I agree with the decision too. Just saying I agree with the decision to.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a no, no, no reason not to do this. And it'll, it'll hopefully save the town some money in the legal defense of this as well. So. And then the second, I just wanted to let folks know that the long vacant building and grounds technician position has been officially filled. We have a gentleman whose name is David Furman, who has accepted that position and started at the beginning of the month. So good news on filling a position we've been trying to fill for quite some time.
Yeah, it's good.
That is all I, all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Not seeing any. It's in line to the CD removal.
Thank you for amending the agenda. This just comes along at an awkward time and I wanted to catch the board at a meeting where the future renewal could occur. I wasn't thinking I would get any rates or terms, but I did. And the thirteen, there's a thirteen week, twenty six week. I don't know that we've gone any further out than that. That's a ninety one day or a hundred and eighty two day term. Rates are three point three five for the thirteen week or ninety one day. So I think that one would be the one to do is it would just renew it as it is. And then the, the next one for twenty six weeks is actually a slightly lower rate. So I guess I would recommend to the board, we pick the, the shorter thirteen week rate for now. And then maybe in thirteen weeks, we'll know whether we have any additional funds that could be invested at the same time at that renewal point, when it might be a little less hectic for everybody. But I thought this rate would be good and wanted to get your.
How, how much money are we talking?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're talking a million, twenty four thousand, six fifty eight and eighty four cents. Started out at a million, I believe, so I might hang my hat on that, but it started on September 4th. And it's a three month. It'd be the ninety one days.
Very good. Thank you. Marcia has a question. What is the rate?
Pardon?
What are the other rates?
What are the other rates? I don't have any other rates because this is in a program that is typically off the bank's rate sheets. This is not a bank CD. Again, it's in a program that is specific to large dollar investments.
So you also said twenty six, ninety and one eighty. Those, those were the other options for time limits.
Yes, time limits. Because of the quick notice to get this on and, and renew it, I thought it would, might be most comfortable to do it for the term it's already in, which is a three month term and stay with that, which is.
Now the other rates.
Okay. So the, the, the first available term is thirteen weeks, ninety one days. The rate is three point three with an APY of three point three five. Twenty six weeks, hundred and eighty two days would be a rate of three point two with an APY of three point two five. Thirty nine weeks, two hundred and seventy three days would be three point one zero with an APY of three point one five. And fifty two weeks, three hundred and sixty five days would be three point two with a three point two five APY.
So fifty two weeks and twenty six weeks, the same rate?
Right. Fifty two and twenty six. Yeah, that's a fairly long term. Right now, we haven't been going out that far and the rates are, are better on the shorter term. But it's worth a discussion, so.
Further discussion about the rates? True.
I'm comfortable going with, with Chair recommends.
Excuse me?
I'm comfortable going with what Chair recommends.
Sounds, yeah, sounds wise to me. Okay. Possibility in a better rate. Would someone like to make a money? Yes, Marcia, just wanted to ask Brennan. I was going to ask, any, you see any need for that money?
No, we, we did get a forewarning that this renewal was going to be requested. I, I think that this should be fine. Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. All right. Are we ready to make a motion? Does someone want to? Draft one?
Good night, Matt. I move to. Is this a rollover?
It's a, to, to roll over. Yeah.
I've moved to roll over the current CD into a thirteen week, into the thirteen week, three point three five percent APR rate.
APY.
It'd be.
Yeah.
That was three point three five, right? Yes. And, and did you catch that? Yeah. You want to hear it again? Yes, please. Can you do it again?
To roll over the current CD into a thirteen week, three point three five APY.
Okay.
CD.
Thank you, Matt. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? We're going to vote. Marcia, have your phone?
Yes.
Okay. And Chemo? Okay. Tella?
Yes.
Matt? And I'm the yes. Okay. No, very timely. Okay. For our next agenda item, it's the fiscal year twenty seven budget. Speak to this, Brennan?
I'd be happy to. So as we did at last week's meeting, we're gonna go through the other departments that would like to present their individual budgets. And before I do that, just in the packet, there was a cover that went with the updated draft. And I think what we'll do moving forward, just to keep everything straight, we'll have a date on each amended draft. So if we make changes to this after this meeting, the next meeting, we'll have a new date for the coming, so we can keep it all straight. So as I mentioned, we caught a couple of little edits that were made in this current version. They basically increased the increase from last year to this year from two point oh four percent to two point oh seven percent. And that basically accounted for another monetary article that we've not received a request for until and after the deadline had occurred, but it did come in. So that's twenty five hundred dollars more in the appropriations and eighteen hundred dollars was added as well for the Energy Committee. So those are reflected in both the revenue budget and the expenditure budget. And the new numbers are what we're working with tonight. And I think that's the summary of changes from the last meeting. I am now, I think, going to segue into the Town Administration expenditure budget and just spend a minute walking through that with folks. I think Marcia has graciously agreed to share the screen again for those on Zoom. A little hard to see, but that's, that's what we're looking for. Thank you. So just to walk through this quickly, the first twelve lines there, we have the Select Board stipend, which is unchanged. We have the three salaries for the Town Manager, the Assistant Town Manager and our Administrative Assistant. You will note in the Administrative Assistant, that is only half of the salary because this gets split between the Town Manager's office and the Department of Public Works. Below that are the, the FICA, the MEDI, the health insurance, other benefits that go along with the salaries. So that takes us down to the Town Manager relocation expense. We had ten thousand dollars budgeted for that last year. That was not used, obviously. And we're going to keep that in for the fiscal year twenty seven budget as well. Hope's that I'm able to find a location closer to work here. Most of this remains unchanged. So we have professional services, our VLCT membership, the legal line. That was reduced from a hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty five to eighty thousand last year. We're just going to keep that level at eighty thousand for the fiscal year twenty seven proposal. And then again, most of the other pieces here are just level funded. The advertising line item is down a thousand dollars. I'm sorry, five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. So five hundred dollars less than what we had budgeted last year. Down at the bottom, you will see the, the total amount of increase is at four point three four percent. Happy to answer any questions on that. It's, I think, fairly, fairly straightforward.
Tella? I have several questions. The first one is fairly general. It would be really helpful to have fiscal FY twenty five actuals. And what I did was because we had unaudited actuals for period twelve back in July, I have them here and I've been writing them in to, to see. And it would be nice if they could be incorporated into everything. It's very, it's, it's interesting. It doesn't explain away everything and there are special circumstances why some things are different. For instance, on legal, we only spent in fiscal twenty five, we spent under twenty two thousand dollars. And I just don't see why we need eighty thousand. I mean, unless we're anticipating.
We, we have.
Terrible.
Well.
Great Hydro.
I hate to predict terrible things. We, we do have, it's, it's a difficult to predict budget line. And in the past, we have had years where it was higher. I don't want to speak any more than we feel eighty thousand.
It would be, well, it would be, in that case, it would be helpful also to have like year to date budget versus actual, which, you know, it's again, I mean, we could do that and try to project for the rest of the year, but I don't think we need any, because I don't think we need.
Well, you're, you're welcome to your opinion. Certainly. The question about the, the actuals we discussed at the last meeting. So we have internal actuals that we use with department heads when we came through and worked on this budget over the last two months. We have an audit ongoing. We're hoping to have some audited final numbers that we're going to include in this, hopefully for the next meeting on December tenth.
That'd be great.
So that, that was the discussion that you missed at the last meeting.
I did.
So instead of putting numbers in here that might change or might give people a false impression that we would then have to go back and correct, I think it does make sense to keep that line blank for now. As you said, if you're really curious, you could go back and look at unaudited numbers from the end of last fiscal year. Yeah. And.
They're, they're guidelines.
Yeah.
They're not fixed. No.
And, and not that we're expecting great changes there, but I think again, just for efficiency, it doesn't make sense to print something and then have to change it for another meeting and explain all of that.
The other question I have is, when there was a discussion about, you know, target increase for the town and we were talking about six percent because COLA plus STEP comes out to five point nine percent or something. This is not the only place where I noticed that the salaries are up a bit more than six percent. And I don't know if there's some reason I don't know about.
Did you read the packet in the last, the last summary, executive summary in the packet for the meeting?
No.
Read that.
And you want to recap it for me?
Well, it's, it's basically.
Because I keep noticing.
I don't, I want to try to recap it for you, but Barry did a really nice job in a couple of paragraphs of explaining why there are changes that are increasing salary lines over what we would have anticipated if everybody got five point.
Because as I say, I've noticed this kind of consistently.
Yep. There are differences there. But as I said, if you read that and still have questions, reach out to me. I think it's, it's very clearly explained. So, so with that, if, if people are good with the Town Administration, I think the next on the agenda.
I mean, this is maybe a dirty trick, but it, you know, you can play with numbers in lots of different ways. So what I've been doing for these things is I looked at the actuals for fiscal twenty five because I had an approximation of that. And then I said, if I compare actuals for twenty five and I look at the twenty seven request, it's a whole lot more than it looks like if we just say, well, you know, we had a budget that we have for this year and now we're budgeting. It, it looks worse. It looks worse than maybe it is. And I, and, and there are reasons why some of the, the, the department lines were down. I mean, they didn't have staff for a while or, you know, whatever. But I, I think it's helpful also to say, like, if you look at the fiscal year actual twenty five versus request for twenty seven, it's, it's more, it's almost a thirty three percent increase.
I'm not sure where you're getting that.
Well, I look at five sixty, five sixty eight, six seventy three. This is just, I, I'm not trying to pick on any one department because I did this for everybody.
So.
And I looked at the actual, and, and you know, it's, it's, that doesn't tell the whole story. I understand that, but I don't, I don't want to cover that up because my ambition is to have a budget that does what we need to do. Everybody has what they need, the equipment, the personnel and so on, and the taxpayer is treated as fairly as possible. So that's why I did, I looked at it that way. And that's why I wish I had more, more actuals. Right. Thanks.
So if I may, just, are you aware of the total increase year to year that's proposed right now in this budget?
Well, I know there was a supposed target of, of six percent. And, and this says that it's going to be only two percent, which is fat. And so I still think, you know, we should look at the line things individual, like.
Well, we, we are.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Anyway, I'll shut up now on that part.
If I could add. I understand the reason for, for not putting in the, the initial, the unaudited fiscal year twenty five actuals. And I'm expecting them to be in the packet for the, for the beginning of December. And so the way I'm approaching this is to hear what everyone has to say and to explain sort of bumps in their, in their line items. And then, and then once we have the actuals, you know, I expect that our two December meetings, we can, we can really kind of pick through things with a little bit more background because we can do what you're saying. You can also go back and, and check the twenty four and twenty three actuals too, to give you really a trajectory of what we need and what we might not need. But, but, but I was viewing this as a, as a time to receive all this information first because it's a lot of, like, it's a lot of just a lot of information.
Yeah.
And, and then, and then we can do that. And maybe asking for the FY twenty four actuals to be put in. And maybe asking for the FY24 actuals to be put in here is also fair, because then we'll have two years of actuals to really go through and, and understand, you know, where, how we got to where we are. But I expect there to be more discussion in our two meetings in December.
I'm just being cool as usual.
Sure.
May I just, sure, quick comment. It'll be 30 years in March for me as town treasurer and sounds like a long time. And so I have asked around town for people that might be interested in serving in that capacity. And not a lot of interest in doing it without some compensation. And I've been able to do that at a stipend level that has been in the budget from, for a long time at a very stable number, hasn't grown much, maybe $300.
Over some years?
Yeah. And, and remember that I did serve before town manager, former government. So anyway, I was paid differently, but never as much as wages are today, of course. So I just would want to make mention of the stipend for the treasurer, in case it's not me. I think the conference dues and expense line item is very important, should it be a new treasurer. I know I do my education and continuing on, and actually I help to train treasurers in Vermont these days as well. So I think that's an important line item to keep for the possibility of a new treasurer who will want to get involved and be involved in the Clerks and Treasurers Association and other types of training. So if, if it gets to a spot where I do step down and somebody else steps in. Maybe we'd make a warrant article up for a treasurer payment of some sort that changes from this. I just wanted to give you that perspective.
Thank you. Any other questions on this section?
I think we can move on. Yeah. So next up, we have our finance budget. And Barry, I believe, is on Zoom and might be able to.
Yeah.
Speak to us.
Yeah.
Hi Barry.
Hello. And so the finance budget, the first nine lines or so are all salary and salary related or benefits are related to salary. So those change based on COLA and step increases as well as the percentages. Because there, most of them are calculated on a percentage. So those are what they are. It's not much that we can do to change those. The professional services line gets used for some different things. It gets used for monies that we might have to pay the software company for a specific project. Gets used for the money outside of the audit. If we have questions for the auditor. It will get used for outsourcing the printing and mailing of the tax bills. The independent audit, it doesn't cost that much each year. It's at 40,000. But it will go up significantly if there's a single audit. So I've just kind of kept that number in there because it's kind of an unknown from two years out, if there's going to be a single audit or not. And the single audit can add a lot of money to the audit pretty quickly. I think the rest of the expenses are all pretty much the same. I think the only one that went up a couple hundred dollars was the software as NEMRC, the acronym N E M R C, which is our accounting software. It stands for New England Municipal Resource Center. They usually go up in their rate each year. So the overall increase is 5.97% for the finance office.
Questions? Can you just explain what you mean by a single audit versus a regular?
A single audit, audit, it depends on how much federal money you receive. There's a threshold. So if you receive, it used to be 700,000. I think it might've gone up to a million now. And it just, it requires a different level of reporting. So it's extra work. And it's extra filing and it's a little bit more detailed. We had one last year, I think we had, we had one.
Because of like FEMA.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will likely have one and it's coming here with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to share with you all, I have your attention, that the finance office has spent a lot of time and energy, especially in the past year, working through the accounting software. It's, it's one of the places actually where the turnover in the finance office has surfaced, where we can see procedures were, you know, stopped or, you know, someone else coming in, didn't realize it was a process, so didn't do it. And some of the setups in the different modules. NEMRC is a period based software that's organized in modules. So we've been going through each module and cleaning it up and reconciling everything. Which is not something that's been happening right along. So we've restored that process. And in the process of restoring that, we've also built guidance and, and directions. And we have documents for each area that talks about the controls and the segregation of duties. So there's a lot of, a lot of work that's happened that's improved things. It makes the day to day operations even better. And the, the module we're, we're working on right now with NEMRC is the payroll module. And that's important for a lot of reasons, because we outsource the W2s. There's always an issue at the end of the year with some setup within the payroll module and they help us find it and fix it. Once we get the payroll module up and running and coded correctly, then we'll be able to bring that work back in-house. This year, we're doing the 1099s ourselves due to the work that we've done in the AP module. And the, our focus, you know, for some special projects, because we usually have like March, April and May, we have a good, solid three months where we can focus on, you know, special projects to move things forward. One of them is we want to, you know, we're getting closer and closer, in my opinion, with the budgeting process of coming up with a consistent approach and, and building better templates. So that's something that I want to work on, you know, to bring all these things that we're talking about, about putting in the prior years. And, you know, the actuals and all that build that templates that, so it's not so much work. We're not recreating the wheel each year. And we're going to, I'm going to develop some guidance around audit preparation. June, July and August are very different months in the town as far as the accounting goes. And there isn't, there isn't any written documentation on the steps that need to happen. And they're not all exactly the same year to year, but it's very hard to find the history and be consistent. Because there hasn't been consistency due to the turnover in the office. So we can get that on paper, then it'll be more consistent and also easier for the auditors each year. And the other project is to go through the town reports and identify the funds that are designated and those that are reserved. And actually change the names in the general ledger chart of accounts so that we don't always have that question every time we talk about a fund. And the one last thing I wanted to share that we've also done in this past year is that we've completed 10 years' worth of tax warrants that hadn't been addressed. So we still have a few more years to go, but it's a lot of backwork and getting caught up on things. And we've developed a really good filing system within the, within the office as well. So there's been a lot of work that's happened that you don't see just in the reports that we send you. So I just wanted you to be aware that it's come a long way and patience has been a strong addition. And I feel like we've, we've made some great strides. So I hope that it'll make it easier for everyone, because it sure makes it easier for us.
Thank you, Barry. That sounds.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's one of the great things about the budget process is we can hear things like that from Barry that we don't hear on a regular monthly basis. We just get, you know, the department report. So that's really helpful.
And it's sort of structural type things. And it sounds like, it sounds like rebuilding, remodeling a house or something like that. I think it sounds, with the structures. I do have a question for Barry. You explain, you said 10 years' worth of tax warrants. Could you explain what you, what should be filed? Is there a tax warrant every year that should be?
At the, at the end of the tax cycle, after the second payment, we produce a delinquent tax warrant for the treasurer. And that information gets filed with the town clerk. And when the, when the town clerk put all of their information online, people started researching some things and they'd find out that, oh my gosh, we have a tax lien on our property. And they didn't, the paperwork had just never been completed. So we went back through and completed all of that work, which requires us to research it, identify what's been paid. And then the delinquent tax collector, Brennan, has to sign those. And then we have to give them to the town clerk and then they have to record them. So it's quite a process, but we're trying to get it all caught up so that we can build a systematic approach so that it happens on a routine basis. Right now, it's been a little overwhelming just to, you know, go back and get caught up. But we have to, we do need to build a process so that we don't get in that position again.
All right. Thank you for the explanation of your questions for, oops. Yeah, a crossfire.
Barry, I just wanted to say it sounds just right. And thank you very much for all that work.
It's been my pleasure.
And Kimo? Yeah, this, thank you for explaining this to us. And I had a little question. You mentioned guidance and templates and documents. I'm wondering if that, I might ask the town manager, if I'm in here, is that something that is being done generally in the town? Is there sort of cross breeding between departments so that the templates and documentation is consistent across departments? Is that?
Well, I think what Barry is referring to is really specific to the process and procedure of the finance office. So she came in there again with, with a lot of years of, of different, different leadership, different ways of doing things. So what she's been working on is really trying to leave that whenever she is going to leave with kind of, here's how this should be done. And then the new finance director, at whatever time they come in, would be able to pick that up from there and not scramble around as Barry and Joyce had done, trying to figure out where, where is this? Why isn't it done this way? Why is it done a different way? So as far as like across departments, probably not, like not to my knowledge, because there aren't a whole lot of systems, other than maybe the, the clerk and the finance office and the delinquent tax collector that have those kind of multi-department connections.
Okay. And it just seems like it might be a common issue among, I mean, it happens in every business, every department, that you have discontinuities and things. And this sounds like we've got somebody who's organizing in a way that other people might be able to take advantage of.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, each department has its own processes, you know, formal policies, practices, you know, procedures. And this is probably the more complex of all the departments as far as what they deal with on a daily basis.
Anyway, thank you.
Just going to say, in terms of what you're talking about, Kimo, I think what Barry's doing is the closest thing to a workflow for the organization.
Of course.
Right. And I think she's the.
She has her hand up as well. She might have another thoughts to add.
Barry?
I, I just wanted to say that also, one of the benefits of doing, doing what we've been doing is it's, it becomes more cost effective, especially at the audit time, the less that the auditor has to do. And the more that we understand what is required and, and we set our, you know, the accounting system up for that, we set our processes up for that. I mean, ultimately, there's less time and energy spent there. It, it's more efficient, you know, the, the auditors look forward to coming and working with you. And, you know, we just get to make things better each step of the way. And right now, there hasn't, it's been hard to research, to go back to say, well, what did they do last year? Or what did they do the year before? And it hasn't been consistent. So it, it also makes it hard to feel like you're on solid ground sometimes. And it's really hard to train someone new when you don't have a consistent history to use as an example. So it's, there's a, you know, it's from an organizational standpoint and a management standpoint. The accounting software is really critical to know and understand. And we spend a lot of time and energy working with NEMRC as we pay for support and the support doesn't cost us additional money, other than the annual contract. And I use it all the time to make sure that I'm fully understanding what the software is doing. So that if we design a process that it works and it makes sense. And at the end of the year, when we get to the audit, we're going to be good. That's, that's kind of how I think about things. Everything you do is really with the end goal in sight and, and often for the finance office, that the final product is the audit.
All right. Thank you very much, Barry.
I wanted to echo the thanks to Barry.
Oh, yes.
Every time I've talked to her, you're, the pride in, like the pride in that you take in your work and your proactive changes and improvements that you've made to our finance department. And that you're also thinking about succession planning and handing it off to sort of, you know, handing it off so that the next person can take it and run with it. You know, shows that you really care about the town as well, not just the job. And so I think we're lucky to have you and thank you for taking this time to explain it to us.
I appreciate that. I don't see any point in me being there and working hard if it's not going to make a difference, you know? So that's just kind of my personal approach. So I've enjoyed the work and I know how far it's come. It's not, it's not there yet, but it's a lot closer than it was a couple of years ago. And we're now starting to feel the positive parts of all that work and that feels, that feels really good. So I appreciate that you all recognize that and appreciate it as well. So thank you very much.
All right. Very good. Any other questions? We'll move on then.
All right. So I will introduce Stephen Tru, our planning director, who is a very simple budget.
I do. So I started 13 months ago in October, when, you know, we were sort of beginning last year's budget process. So this is the first full year I've had sort of understanding the operational expenses in, you know, in my office. And I think, you know, the, the changes that you see here, year over year, reflect that learning. You know, things that we don't pay for at the rate that we had budgeted in the past and the things that we under budgeted. Aside from that, as Brennan said, it's a simple budget to cover some limited operational expenses. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm guessing that somebody, before you got here, because it started before you got here, just really underestimated the amount of time that your assistant needed to keep the office running, especially when there was nobody in there, because, you know, we had a budget that was this and the expenditures.
Yeah, I think you're right.
But my impression was, it wasn't, she was paid on an hourly, hourly basis and it wasn't like a full-time job. It seems that she's been much more in demand than somebody anticipated at one point.
It, it's been very beneficial to, you know, to have Pam in her role. And, you know, she was working additional hours when we, when I started, you know, I saw no reason to change that. So yeah, there was, she also had a step increase and.
So.
Yeah.
One of those things that makes sense why, you know, the number is a lot bigger, because it seemed to me she was having to work a lot.
Yep.
Very good. Kimo, did you have a question?
I just, how is it that you can operate with a $500 budget for software?
I don't use, you know, I don't, I use open source software for, and Windows software. Yeah. That 500 is for Adobe Acrobat Pro. I kept it in there because our town plan was written using, I'm not going to remember the name, but another Adobe. I'm not sure I remember the name, but, um, and it, another Adobe software, which I, I may have to license if you want to maintain the looking field, which I think is, um, a good looking field.
All the geographic information that we go through.
All free.
All free.
All free.
Easy.
Um, advertising has become quite expensive. So, uh,
To advertise?
Every public hearing that the development review board has, um, goes into the newspaper. Municipalities across the state do a great job of supporting our local newspapers. And I'm happy to continue that.
What is mapping for?
That's to, uh, annually update our parcel map, the, um, tax map. So when we have subdivisions, uh, boundary line adjustments, mergers, the, um, we have to sort of outsource that to Nemec or another company to process those changes and get it back to us.
So for other mapping that you're going to do for a town and things like that, are you going to use, um, two rivers?
Yeah, they do offer those services. Um, and if I needed, um, you know, some complicated cartography to, to support something, I, I would approach them. Um, I also, I've, we've set aside some monies for planning services. Um, in the case that you need to outsource that particular work or other similar.
New questions?
Very happy you're here.
I also want to go on the record and say Barry's fantastic. So.
Uh, the grants are, uh, relatively small. Uh, is that, do you anticipate the town of Norwich, uh, uh, planning, applying for grants in the future for specific projects or?
Yeah, I, I do, um, you know, sort of on a case by case basis. And, you know, that set aside is for the typical 10% match. Generally these planning grants are, you know, fifteen to $30,000. So that's the set aside.
Our expense.
Yeah. And, you know, I think if there was an opportunity that required a larger match, I would plead my case to the select board.
Talk.
Yes.
What? Do you have a question, Rasha? Yes, I did. Um, so you've been here a year now. Do you feel you have the sufficient tools?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I feel well supported.
Good. Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen. Next on the agenda, we have our fabulous recreation director. Fabulous Bree. Setting the bar high for you here.
Yeah, thanks. It's great. Was an introduction.
Wait till you get the fire chief. I gotta.
Yeah. Real razzle dazzle there.
Comes with a lot of puns, I think.
Um, so there were not a lot of changes. Um, with my budget, most of it was, um, cleanup. So we moved the MyRec software cost out of registration into its own line item under administration. Um, so you'll see that. And then on the program section, hats and t-shirts was merged into uniforms. Finally, because the hats and t-shirts are the uniforms for some participants. So it made a lot of sense to just merge them. Uh, and under recreation facilities, site work was merged into repairs and maintenance. Again, most of our site work is done as repairs or maintenance. Um, there are decreases in rec field care because we aerated and overseeded this fall. And we have applied compost twice, which is really expensive. So we're not going to compost next year, but we will oversee, um, and we will aerate. The ice rink, uh, is, this is an off liner year. So we bought the liner last year. We have a big rink coming this winter, if it gets full enough. And then next winter we'll cut the rink liner down to, and that's what we do every year. So then we can use the middle of the liner to make a smaller rink and get rid of any potential holes. Um, and increases, I increased equipment and supplies because we reopened aftercare this year and it's expensive. The rental facility fees was also increased because we are now paying the congregational church $170 a week for two rooms that we're renting downstairs for that aftercare program. That does include cleaning. So that's been less of a headache. Um, and then the portable toilets is increasing because we'd like to add another toilet to Ballard Park. So Ballard is the only trail system right now that does not have one. And it sees a lot of usage. So it made more sense to add one there. There's a nice flat place near the parking lot that we can put it. Um, water usage, we're looking at an upgrade of the Huntley Meadows Fountain, um, to a water bottle filling station that does not use electricity. We found one. Um, and so that will definitely increase how many people are using the water and the flow rate. Uh, and that's all that I have for the increases. Right now the entire budget has risen by under 5%. Um, but the revenue that we're expecting has also risen. We're projecting a 34, um, point seven eight increase in revenue for next year. Right now we are $20,000 ahead of our FY25 revenue.
Wow.
So we're on track. Yeah. Um, the capital budget, uh, pretty straightforward. Um, we're on schedule with the rebuild of the tennis courts. You've probably seen the huge piles of asphalt sitting in the tennis courts. Um, that will be moved in the spring, repaved, and then we'll reline the courts. Um, we are also on task with a new trail groomer, um, for, um, not just, you know, grooming the trails in the snow, but I'm working with, um, the police department and having it be a dual, a rescue vehicle as well, uh, which we've talked about for a while. So that's been great with that. Um, we were going to replace the cedar playhouse at Huntley Meadows, but it's fine. We're just going to replace the siding and then we're going to reshingle it. Um, and it, it should last for quite a while. It put, and we're pushing it out to 2030 for a full replacement. I did talk to Vermont Sheds and they agreed, um, that we should not have to replace that. Um, the next project will be the replacement of the play structures on both the small and large areas of the playground. They did pass inspection last time, but then when I looked them up, they, they definitely have, um, seen their life. They've lived a, a very good life. So when I was at the Vermont Recreation and Parks Association conference, I met with retailers of natural structures and, um, all ability structures, um, they all install. And the, the cost isn't as bad as I thought. So, um, we're going to look at getting some fundraising done for in 2028 to replace them, except for the huge double helix thing that is going to stay. That's not going to be replaced into 2031. It's not my favorite piece of equipment, but it is the newest one in there. Um, the next regrade of Gerard baseball and the softball field, um, is not until 2034, when we had it done in 2024. He had said this should last about 10 years. Um, but honestly, we're not doing a great job on upkeep. So I'm looking at a contractor to keep the fields playable, um, so that we can get that full 10 years out of the fields. Questions?
Design rec facility fund. $15,000, that is.
You rec facility fund? Yeah, that's what we use.
Designated rec.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah.
Matt, did you have?
The groomer is like a side by side with tracks? And then you'll pull a drag behind it?
We already own the drag. We own a roll court and a drag.
Okay.
So that definitely cuts down on the cost right now. We're looking at a Polaris or a Can-Am.
And I will say that Bree did go out into the world and, and search for, used inexpensive groomer for this year, which we didn't want to take the risk on because it was running a little rough.
It's so bad.
We will, we will, uh, try to have something new that will last a long time here.
I am working with the trails committee guys on that too, because they're, they're really great. They're the ones who've been doing the grooming for us and they maintain the trails.
And you're talking about only Huntley Meadow, right?
Uh, no, actually this year we're going to have the Nordic Trail back. So the 10K Nordic Trail. With me to parcel five. Uh, John, um, John is coming back down Gulf Re. He's, um, yeah, the guy who groomed it before. He's coming back this year.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Do you have a question? And Bree, are you responsible for the kiosks that are going up on the park?
I am.
So are we getting, I was out there the other day, are we getting one on the parking lot side?
Yes. Yes.
Pretty soon, I hope.
Very soon. Yes. It's, it was ordered weeks ago.
I was out there recently and somebody piled out of a car from New York with three dogs, a puppy and a bunch of kids.
Scattered to the wind.
And I looked at the little handwritten typing sign that said, you're still supposed to be on a leash right now. So I was wondering if we could have like orange tape around it or something.
Yeah. Yeah. No, hopefully it'll be here soon.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bree?
You're doing a great job and it sounds so you inspire people who want to work with you and get stuff, help you get stuff done.
Thanks.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right.
And now.
Now, our, it said fabulous for, for Bree, our terrific fire chief, Alex Northern.
Y'all's cookies this year.
Yeah. You haven't been here in a while.
Is every single movie. Oh, yes, we do.
Kimo has upgraded the class.
Has he really? This is your doing.
And look, silver plates.
You know what? It's, it's impressive. You don't have to. You do a good job.
Press the button on the lights. You don't get a cookie.
I complained about you to your brother. I just let you know.
Everybody does.
Well, folks, thank you for, for, um, having me. You know, i- i- it's funny when I come and, and talk to you all. I feel a little like you've already seen this, you've scrutinized it and you've looked at it. So I'm, I'm just wondering what I can add. So what I thought I would do is really just sit down. We don't have a lot of, of, uh, kind of, uh, increases. So maybe I'll just go down the, the ones that are increased. I'll start with the EMS drill wage. We have three or four new EMTs. Uh, one was interviewed tonight as well. So, uh, there's more EMTs coming to drills. So we needed to kind of raise that up a little bit. We go down to, um, under tools and equipment, you know, fire tools and equipment. We just have more need for, for things, every new engine and, and equipment wears out. So we wanted to add a little bit in there to, to cover that cost. And it's, it's really not, uh, much more than it was last year. Fire truck repair and maintenance, slight bump there. It's self-explanatory. It's more expensive to, to keep things lubed and working and running and all that kind of stuff. Let's see. That's it for, for what I wanted to discuss on, on the ops, ops budget. Any questions?
In, in, in general, yeah. I mean, I don't know if you mean, if ops means I shouldn't jump to something else?
Oh, well, yeah. Well, I don't know. It's.
Okay.
I'm the guest.
Emergency management, I'm assuming the debt service is zero because we've paid off those debts completely. And, um, we are obviously not paying the fire district anything for higher hydrant rentals. Yes. And, um, I, maybe I just don't know how to read your fancy chart. Designated equipment fund 26 going up a lot for.
So, so Priscilla, just so you're aware, this is the operational expenditures for the most part. And then we have detail on the capital budget.
I'm just out of order all the time.
So I think Alex was asking, is there any questions about the expenditure presentation? And it's, we'll segue quickly to the, uh, capital.
Kimo has a. I just had a quick question. So I know, uh, it must be a volunteer organization. When people go out on calls, they get paid.
Yes.
And does all of that pay within the $32,000?
Not a value for the town volunteer. It speaks well for our town.
Compared to the millions and millions of dollars of property, right? I mean, I think it's a, it's a good value and we're well, it's actually paired for it.
Now put a B on it now. It's a, it's a billion dollars in property now.
Billions.
That also leaves their time for training and.
Well, training is a, is a separate. Line item.
See if drilled.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any questions on emergency management? Emergency management budget? There is a, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, how's it, how's it go?
In terms of emergency management? Well, I, I did want to highlight for you under emergency management supplies, there's quite a raise there. You may remember, uh, last year we had the third in a series of, uh, grant funded, um, experiences. We had a, a tabletop drill, uh, one year. Then we had a drill where we actually went out into the community and exercised certain things that we felt needed to, to be looked at. There were several recommendations that came out of the after action review, which is done for every, uh, uh, tabletop exercise of this type. And so that, uh, is reflective of some of the things that we think that we're going to need to, to purchase to improve the EOC. So if, if you were wondering what that big change is, that, that's what it is, based on those recommendations.
When you go out on calls, are you able to communicate everywhere in town at this point?
Yes. And it's a little bit of a qualify, I guess, because it really depends, and I'm not trying to be hokey on the atmosphere. There are times where we always have traditionally had a really bad time communicating in what I call the kind of the hollow, which is Mitchell Brook Road, down the Sharon, Fetter, uh, Sharon, Hartford corner of the town. But lately, you know, I go down there and, and key the mic and do a test and it's really, it's fine. So an- another, um, area is, is, uh, New Boston Road up by the Fetter line. Both of those places is where we targeted the last action, uh, um, exercise. We went to both of those places and, and communicated with radios and it went well. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's been worse. Maybe the tower is really helping that we have. I don't know. But lately it's been really good.
Okay. So we don't, we, we don't need to think about spending money on technology to make sure that we can stay connected everywhere.
Not specifically, no. No.
Is that on a clear day in New Orleans?
I'm not, I don't, I don't remember. Do you?
Uh, the, the tower that we just retired the debt service for, um, made, you know, an, an unmeasurable ton of difference for communication.
That's the one.
I mean, it was just incredible.
Yes, that's.
Right above.
Controversial that was at the time.
Yeah. And a lot of study was put into the waves, like, you know, the radio waves and how they're affected by the topography. And it was lucky that we could put it there and it made, uh, a lot of communication difference.
Yeah.
And you, you and the police are on the, have no problems communicating with each other. But I mean, you're both, I'm same band.
We don't have problems communicating in person nor on the radio.
Good.
His accent, his southern accent is kind of.
He's very down homeish, you know, he loves the, he's, he's, he's a, he has, he has the gift of narrative. Let's put that way. Likes to visit. Is he, is he listening?
He's watching me. You too. Yeah. You'll hear about that.
So as part of the emergency management, at one point there was sort of a neighborhood sort of analysis going on, you know, and connectivity and things. Is that still like on board?
Are you talking about the road captain?
Yeah.
So that was incredibly valuable during the pandemic and it worked really well. In Orange is unique in that we have so many people coming and going all the time. During the pandemic, everybody was in situ, right? Nobody moved. Everybody was there. And so we had a great amount of people who are willing to take that on. Now that it's over, everybody's back to, I'm going to take a year off here. I'm going to go do a semester there. I'm, you know, I'm moving, period. Uh, or I'm new and I'm coming in. So for me to really manage and maintain a list of people in town who would be willing to do that, uh, if I started to pull my hair out. Um, because there's so many people coming and going that it's very difficult to keep track of them. So it's not a good model for us. O- other towns that have more of a stable population that stay there and don't really leave, i- it, it works, but here it just doesn't. So it is, it is. Uh, it was a big help. So, um, but that, those are the, the realities.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? No, the department, a lot of thanks to.
Well, thank you.
And I guess I would like to know, how do you?
I guess I would like to know, how do you pay for those 777 hot dogs? Do you need more?
Emergency management supplies. Four thousand seven eight hundred.
I think I'll start a new line item, party supplies, right? Fund that. No, I think, I think we're, yeah, that was, that was quite a, quite an evening. So we're good.
But seriously, how do you pay for it?
So we have something called the fire company, which is nonprofit, and, and it was funded through that.
Would like to contribute.
Okay, well, we're, we're always open for, for folks who want to donate.
Do you want to talk through the capital?
Sure. Really, I, I don't know, like I said before, I'm not sure what it, what it is that you would like to know about the capital budget. We've had a capital budget for many years, even before I got here. It's really well done. I think it's, there's a lot of time and effort that gets, that gets put into making sure everything is, is, you know, forecasted out. So I'm not sure what you all might want to know.
I will just add, obviously, we have a number of very expensive pieces of equipment that are, I think, have been very thoughtfully, you know, thought out by the fire department. And again, we're, we're trying to keep funds coming in to those designated funds so that we are able to make the purchases at the time we need them. And the other piece of this is the wait time we have right now. So having the ability to say, we will have this money in this fiscal year allows the orders to be placed for what's now a 12, 18-month lag between an order and a receipt.
That's commonplace now.
So that's, I'm very pleased with, with the thought that went into this. And again, a lot of expensive equipment, but it's keeping the, keeping the fire department modern and safe. That's critical.
For the billions of dollars now in real estate that we have in town. I didn't know it was a billion.
In my tenure on this board, we spent over, what, 500,000 on a fire engine?
Yeah, yeah, engine three.
It's only going to get worse, I should think.
Yeah, it is.
Well done.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Right.
Good. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks a lot.
Nice to see you all.
So I, I guess that concludes our presentations for the evening. Thank you to all of the department heads for taking the time to come out tonight. I think everybody's got a, as you can tell, a very strong handle on their, their budgets. They are true professionals, know what they need to run their departments efficiently, and that's great. I think for the next meeting, we'll have our two elected official offices, the town clerk and the listers for presentations there. And again, we're hopeful that we will have audited numbers that we can put into the actuals for fiscal year 25. If somehow we don't, we'll, we'll hope to have them on the 17th. I can't, can't promise and guarantee, but that is the hope.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I guess we'll go on to appointment of board supervisors. Solid Waste Management District. Indeed.
Hello.
Hi.
I didn't know I was going to come after all these Norwich heavy hitters.
Describe you as fabulous and.
Your budget.
I think that greater solid waste is a pretty heavy hitter.
You're filling big shoes. Yeah, Fulton is. Good at this.
You want to speak to your interest in that?
So this is, as I understand it, the alternate position for now. And I've been on the solid waste committee for about three years. I'm the vice chairman right now. And we've done things like fee analysis and more education in town about recycling efforts and talking about all the different aspects of waste reduction. And so I've been talking with Andy Shear, who is also the Greater Upper Valley Solid Waste Management District Recycling Coordinator. And he works with this board a lot. And so it seems like a good continuation of talking about waste and.
Okay. Any questions for Jordan? Pretty happy that you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I think it's something that is important and you don't realize you need it until it doesn't work that, that well.
It's one of those many invisible, sort of invisible support things that we all take for granted when everything works right. Yeah. But it is, yeah. And Marcia, do you have a question?
Yeah. So your three-year term ends in 2026.
Yeah, this, this much.
There'd be some overlap. No problem.
Oh, with being on the solid waste committee and the, I didn't know if that was.
I don't think there's.
I didn't think it was a concept.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. Yeah.
Any other?
Thank you.
If you ever want a little history, a couple of us were here when it was still the dump.
Oh, my God.
I love, I love the dump.
Yeah, it's not a dump. Someone like to make a motion?
I move to appoint Jordan Muller as alternate representative to the Greater Upper Valley Solid Waste Management District Board of Supervisors for the remainder of a two-year term to expire on March 31st, 2026.
Second.
Okay. The discussion. Marcia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimo?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
And that?
Yes.
I'm yes also. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next agenda item is to do is. Listers' wages. And I'm kind of struggling emotionally with this, but could give a little framework or my opinion on why the support might want to look into this. I understand that the, that we all voters that we're talking about taxpayer money. And so voters really need to approve what the funds are spent for. So I was pretty surprised when in June, the listers voted to give them a, a pay increase. I thought that's not in the, sort of in the budget cycle. But I think they're perfectly entitled to advocate for whatever wage they think is appropriate. But I think to have it within the budget cycle makes a lot more sense to me. And also I'm concerned that, you know, it's a lot of hours of listeners work so hard on that reappraisal, they're working to the point of exhaustion. But I also think that putting the wage much higher and still having a set amount of hours where they have to get to work there. You know, it's, it's just a recipe for overspending the amount that the voters have approved. So that's why I'm concerned. Marcia wrote a memo about this as well. She checked with the LCT about some of the issues. And it's a very uncomfortable subject. I don't like how you bring it up. Because I know our listers work hard and they have a lot of technical knowledge and are very devoted to our town. But I'd like to kind of understand how, when we go through the budget process, how we can work this out so that, you know, we can recommend to the voters a reasonable wage for the listers. Or if, if we don't feel comfortable doing that, should the listers have some alternative methods so that the voters can make that decision? So that's why I wanted to bring it up. And I know it's a very uncomfortable subject. That's what I have to say about it. Kimo?
There's nothing about budget on the question. So I'm going to.
Go ahead.
Push that aside, but I, I, to me, it's unfortunate that item under six hundred agenda, the savings labeled board of listers legality of self-approved wages. It could just as easily have enlisted as question of how listers wage determined, appropriateness of listers wage, self-appropriate, or in fact, legality of select or neglecting to set wages as required. Or legality of the town manager or town clerk to present an incomplete item to be voted on. Would we question legality of our town treasurer paying listers an overtime raise, which is a raise? Yes, that happened. It wasn't asked for, not required, but it happened. I don't think so. Simple oversight, as were the other developments. No parties behaved irresponsibly. But oversights might have occurred on every level, as they often can while running a town government. We're all neighbors and friends, so I'd encourage us to work together to get through this. Surely the works of the listers can only be questioned, given the overall success of our most recent appraisal wasn't easy. Very much doubt there's a way to calculate how many hours our list was required to complete their tasks, which are ongoing. And it's fair that they're paid an honest wage. It was up to the select board to determine that wage and present it to our voters. We failed to do that. It says we may do that, and we didn't do that. So while statute 24 VSA 6932 states, a town may vote to compensate any rural town officers for their official services, such down and in the winning may fix the compensation of such officers and out of town employees. We didn't do that. We didn't include a schedule of compensation in the article we wrote. It enabled our listeners to adopt the payment schedule they'd originally proposed during the lister's special meeting on November 2023. And once we'd aggregated our duty to set that wage and allowed the listers to pose to be applied, seems fair for them to assume they were able to adjust their wage. Many adjustments to listers expenses and responsibilities were made this year without budget adjustments. Wages have to be seen in the context of the qualifications our listeners bring to their work, appropriate comparative wages of other elected officials, and of course, the budget. But that's not being discussed today. So to make up for the select word pariah oversight and not listing a wage schedule to be approved by our voters during the special meeting, who was 13th, 2024, I would like to move that the voters of Norwich be provided at the earliest opportunity with the chance to approve an hourly wage for listers at the level of grade 18, at a staff level appropriate to their individual years of service, and with the yearly step increase to be approved on town meeting day each year henceforth, retroactively applied to July 1st, 2025.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. That was a lot.
It was a lot, but this is a lot.
No, it is a lot. Maybe could you, because this may be an ongoing conversation. Would you be willing to provide that speech in writing?
I would.
That'd be good. And were you suggesting when you said, I move, that you would like to sort of pull the decision of the, of a wage structure for the listers out in the open and into a warrant article? Is that what you were suggesting?
That's.
Okay. Well, that's the kind of thing that I wanted to kind of play around with tonight. And the reason for the timing of this is that also the listeners are having to prepare the budget, which is the next thing. But I thought we should air this out a little tonight. Okay. So, and it is awkward the way it was on, and that, I'll, I'll take ownership of that. It could have, you know, that sounds like it, like everybody's on trial or something. It would not work. But we do need to work it out, I think.
Yeah. So I, I actually just moved to do this.
Oh, well, if, if it's an actual motion, we have to capture it.
Yep.
And also you'll have to see if there's a second. So and you'll say it nice and slowly and be so captured. I, we, that's not on the agenda for tonight. Well, it is the self-approved wages. I think the only issue tonight is whether the select board wants to take money from someplace else to continue paying the listers more than the voters approved and for the raise that they were not legally. If you, if you look at the.
That's not what's on here.
No, what it says is listers legality of self-approved wages. That's how it was written by the.
So that's what we're discussing.
But what you're suggesting is getting to the budget. I think that's next time. For this time, what the elephant on the table is, we know that they have, they were approved in the budget at their request in, for fiscal year 26, $31,500.
Yeah.
And now, as of the first three months of the term of the year, they've overspent by 834. And that was a month ago or something. So the question is, I think, at the moment, it's clear from 1885 and from statute as VLCT says, listers and all officials get paid what the voters say they get paid. So the action that they took is extra legal outside what is allowed by law. And I point you again to VLCT.
Yeah.
But we do have, if the board says they want to overrule what the board said, and pay them extra for whatever they want to do for the rest of this year. That, I think, is what we have to decide tonight because they're continuing to incur monies, make demand for payment of work that is over and above what was approved by the voters. And I think the problem here is that we are not dealing with employees. We're dealing with elected officials. We know what the law and the voters have approved and take that position under those terms. They're not employees. They're, from that perspective, they're exempt. They do the job that they have to do for what the voters said they would get received in compensation.
So I contacted VLCT and asked them, said, the only real feedback tonight is whether the budgetary restrictions for wages are the same for hourly compensation as they offer stipend best pay. What happens if conditions require more hours than the hourly wages budget allows but are still well within the overall expenses? The response from Carl Land, your staff attorney. Hi, Kimo. In such a case, if the listeners are telling a select board that they need more budget to be paid to agree on hourly rate, and the select board reasonably agrees with the listeners, and the board is within their budget discretion to supplement additional paid hours.
I just said that. I just said that, but this is not hourly rate.
It is an hourly.
No, no. We, the, if you look what was approved in the warrant.
But the warrant doesn't establish a rate.
No, because at that point, all they had was a stipend of $4,500. Look at the timeline. Look at the timeline. So the warrant, August 13th, 2024. Show the voters of the town of Norwich approve an immediate change in the method of compensating the Norwich listeners from stipend to an hourly wage not to exceed the amount budgeted. We didn't have an hourly wage. It was what was budgeted. At that point, the list, the, the town had voted only $4,500 for stipend.
So we had a special meeting?
No. Then we had a March budget vote for fiscal year 26. And at that point, the listeners requested $31,500 in wages. And that was approved. And then three months later, they voted themselves a three-grade increase so that they'd be the same as the town clerk. They're not employees. They're officials who are elected. And they're elected for what the town has voted to give them.
I didn't find that.
The history is.
It's on the second page.
History is a little bit incomplete in my reading. Yeah, I see that. And I went back and some of these things, for example, especially, there are no notes. Apparently, we don't take notes for special meetings anymore. So I couldn't find the notes for the special meeting. So we approved the immediate change in the method of compensation, Norwich listeners, but we did not set an hourly rate.
The voters voted for compensation of $31,500. The voters voted for compensation of thirty one thousand five hundred dollars.
Within an overall budget for the listeners of how much?
Well, what they were asked to vote on was compensation changing from stipend to hourly wage.
But there are many examples in this town of people's of compensation going over or under what has been budgeted. And as long as it fits within departmental budget, no complaints.
Which is why the yes, but the problem here is.
No.
I was saying, but I don't think I I think your examples are for people that are hired, not elected. Right. So I think that that might be a difference.
They're not employees.
Employees is sort of a structure for getting an increase.
So if if the legal. Since the listeners are telling somebody they need more budget to be paid, they agree upon hourly rate. And the select board reasonably agrees with the listeners and the board is within their budget discretion to supplement additional paid hours.
Which is what I what I said was if the board wants to take money from elsewhere. They could do it.
And we could do it.
We we could do it, but they don't have any legal standing, no jurisdiction. To give themselves a pay raise.
Like they can they can allocate during the budget process for various. And then we always, you know, if we agree, we present it to the voters. And once the voters approve it, then yeah. But sort of a little the timing is odd when it happened.
Yeah, it was odd. I mean.
Well, I don't think it's inappropriate. Let me just say that.
In what other realm do you have people who consider themselves to be employed by X? And they have no supervision and they vote their own wages. It doesn't happen.
Well, in contracting, it happens all the time to go change.
Doesn't happen in government.
Well, I.
We don't. I don't really want to argue this.
Uh, well, I we are arguing this. And I think what I'm being told by this lawyer allows us to approve additional pay. They have budget within their within the lister's budget. And we can approve their using some of that budget to pay wages.
You both agree on that.
We agree. They can cannibalize their budget if they want to and.
Your argument is they can't give themselves a raise. And I guess my argument is.
It's not my argument. It's eighteen eighty five. It's clear.
So, okay, so they we allowed them or we caused them to set their own rate to begin with.
No, they advocated for an amount that they thought was reasonable for the work they had to do last year in the budget turn process. And that that resulted in the thirty one thousand five hundred that was approved by the voters. But then what's happened in June was that, you know, decided they they need a. Increased hourly rate. They wanted to bump that up, but they didn't advocate it in the budgetary process and it has not been approved by the voters. We recommend a budget.
Right. Even though it seems like. We're talking about an hourly rate, talking about the budget, the hourly rate of what we're talking about. So the hourly rate was never set by us for the voters to vote on, just an overall budget. So they they were allowed to set their own rate. Then they later. Were they?
They didn't set.
We didn't. We didn't set.
Asked for a budget line like this.
That's not a rate.
Ask for a budget line.
So if they had asked for a budget and decided they could pay themselves ten dollars an hour. We'd be fine with that.
No, I think that's silly. That's like, oh, they could tell us minimum wage because they're.
But I think we can all agree they set their rate originally. We did not set their rate. We didn't tell them.
Voters that their rate they.
There was no rate in the there was no rate mentioned.
They could have decided based on this to make a demand for the entire amount, right? At the outset, but that's what they were allowed. Or they could have said. We know we have known for years that we were going to have a massive amount of work with a reappraisal. So we know how much that's going to take to do and we can easily divide. Those number of hours by this amount of money that was approved by the voters and that's our hourly rate.
But that's unknowable. I mean, that's completely unknowable for a process like for for reassessment. There is absolutely no way anybody could predict. But I think we're talking about two different things. One is the voters set a budget, correct? We all.
No, we recommend a budget.
They voted.
And we recommend they voted.
Decide whether they think it's reasonable.
And the voters voted for a budget. They didn't vote for a rate of pay. The rate of pay was not set by.
Okay, but but let's take that argument. Yes, the voters did that. So they voted thirty one thousand five hundred. But after going through the I think ordeal of doing the. Uh, reappraisal, if it doesn't seem like enough, I mean, the thirty one thousand five hundred was what the listeners came up. They, you know, they know the hours that they usually need to work. And perhaps that figure was based more on what could have been the median wage for listers. Or some figure because it doesn't work any other way. There's hours. You know, if you're going to come up with a figure unless you just pull it out of the air, it would be the the number of hours you think you need. To, you know, complete your work and a typical rate that's reasonable.
Well, I guess.
Otherwise, it's not based on anything.
Yes, okay, so.
That's not. And when you when they vote on it, you know, the voters vote on. You know, the 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 listeners judgment about what it should be for the wage.
Yes.
But they hadn't had a chance to vote on this new idea that they need money because of the timing of when they decided to do that.
Well, there's an overall budget in the listeners and then there's the budget for wages. The voters agreed to those two figures, the overall wages or the wages and the overall budget.
Well, they agreed to all of it because it's embedded and it's embedded in a huge, you know, you don't do this from the floor.
They didn't. The voters were never told what the hourly wage would be.
Well, no, they weren't.
So what I'm saying is, who set the hourly wage?
The listeners decided what they would get, right?
Once we've allowed the listeners to set their hourly rage, that is a precedent that should allow them to reset their hourly rage.
Right. What are you going to do about the law?
But the law, we never gave the voters a chance to vote on the wage scale. We gave them a chance to vote on.
They don't typically vote on any wage scale. Okay.
Well, this says it says in the uh, the. Information that you sent that we may set. We may set.
Yes, we just.
But we didn't. The fire. I'm not trying to frustrate anybody. I just think we're talking about two different things here. We're talking either about the budget or the wages. The wages have to fit within.
Talking about right now, I think what I think this conversation is about. Is about how much money we're going to keep paying them in this fiscal year. Because Barnes from eighteen eighty five says a lister can recover only such compensation for his services as the town votes him.
Is that on an hourly basis or a stipend basis?
It's the amount. It's going on thirty one thousand five hundred. That was voted.
Compensation.
Now, I feel like I feel like I'm hearing the same things over and over at this point. And I think it might be helpful if we heard from the listeners because they're the other part of this sort of conversation. Yeah, and and I appreciate that we're having this conversation because I'd like because I wanted to learn more about this topic. And I understand that there's like a lot of different, I don't know, lenses on it, like different ways to look at it. There's also some legal precedent, which is also helping to frame this, but. Uh, I was viewing this as a information gathering discussion that is, I agree with you, poignant to have now.
Have it now.
Because in the first of, you know, our next meeting, we're going to be talking about sisters, but.
Right. All right. That okay with everyone? Would you want to speak to Pam, come up and speak and say we'd like to come over and say you'll both come up? That's sure.
As all of you recall, I sat in the chair that you're sitting in right now, Mary, when this came up. And it was a special meeting in August because. The board would not vote. When the budget was put together to compensate the listeners as an hourly wage, the request had been out there for a couple of years. And it was turned down every time. So it went out to the voters because it was approved at one of our meetings. We had the special town meeting and. After the meeting, when the article was approved by very wide margin. We discussed it in the next select board meeting. And I recall that the question was asked by one of the board members, not myself. One of the board members asked the listeners how they plan to set their hourly wage. And the answer was, well, we'll have to look at the budget and come up with with something we think is appropriate. So that was an abdication of. Twenty four VSA nine thirty two to put the responsibility to set that hourly wage. On the listeners rather than accept it as a responsibility of the board. And the reason I think that happened is because no one on the board knew about twenty four VSA nine thirty two at that time. Otherwise, it should have been brought up and the board should have set the wage. But that didn't happen. And so here we are. And the listeners are happy to talk to to the board about our compensation, what is fair. Uh, but I think the board also has to understand that when the FY twenty six budget was discussed. There was no way for this board or the listeners to know that there would be such slippage in the schedule with KRT. That we ended up doing all of the grievance work. After the start of the new fiscal year. Typically, that's all done by June thirtieth. And so here we are with, I I I looked at my schedule today, two hundred and ninety six point five hours. To put in from July first to to August fifteen, when the grand list was lodged. So if each of us are putting in about three hundred hours. That's well over anything that we could have ever foreseen. So. That's why we are where we are budget wise. And again, the budget is not on the agenda tonight, but I just want you to understand that. This whole thing could never have been predicted. Back in the fall of twenty twenty four, what would happen in July and August of twenty twenty five. So.
The other. I'll just add, I'll just add that I went back to the lister meetings, which according to Marcia's memo. There are no records of past lister meeting agendas, packets or minutes on the website.
They weren't when I looked, but they're there now.
Well, they've all they've been there all along because we turn it over to the town manager's office and they post them. So anyway, we met because we got to our meeting where we needed to come up with a decision as to how. We would orchestrate what we had been given as a vote of the town. And the minutes are clear that Ernie and I talked through documents that we had and I had done some research and. Uh, we established that we would work with the town's pay scale. It seemed like the reasonable document to work from. And that was done in August of twenty four. Uh, at that time, and again, there was never any VSA discussion about who to do what. And um, we went forward with our best understanding.
I would also point out that the listeners Cheryl and Ernie did not take any stipend for the month of July and August of last year. They waited until after Labor Day to start turning in their hours and they never turned in any request for their stipend.
For the first two months. Yeah.
They worked absolutely for free. So and and historically, the listeners have been underspent for the last ten years that I looked at. At approximately nineteen thousand dollars a year. So it's not like the listeners are spendthrifts and, you know, we're just looking at how can we milk this town for more and more money. The listeners have one year we were when I was a lister back in the day. Um, we had a surplus of forty thousand dollars, but the average has been about nineteen. So the listeners are very careful about how their money is spent. But again, I would just say that we're in the situation we're in now budget wise because no one could have foreseen. The fact that the grand list would not be lodged until the absolute drop dead deadline of August fifteen. So a hundred and ninety three agreements has had to be heard and decided and the result of grievance letters go out. During the first six weeks of the new fiscal year, when typically it's done in previous fiscal year. We had a twenty thousand five hundred and eighty three dollar unaudited surplus for twenty twenty five. So a lot of that money would have covered any of the hours that we spent during the first part of fiscal year twenty six. But again, that was beyond the control of the listeners because KRT did not take the deadlines. It was in their contract.
Okay, you're willing to take questions or okay. Did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. I just want. For the people who are new on the board. We had a couple of years of questions about changing. They wanted to go from a stipend to get more money. And so we ultimately in November of twenty three, as it's in the memo. The select board sought legal advice because we knew about twenty four VSA nine thirty two. Everybody knows a town votes compensation to town officers. That's what that says. So we sought legal advice and they said, put it on the article and that's what we did. Because we are not the voters. We recommend a budget. The voters approve compensation for elected officials.
So the way the article was written, it said not to exceed budget. Not to exceed the amount budgeted and the um. Budget hasn't been exceeded. Our budget for our department hasn't been exceeded.
I think.
And we've turned back. But you know, money every year, which we have asked in the past. To encumber or use towards the reappraisal fund. Um, in the past, because it would be another way to take that surplus that we generated and put it into the next reappraisal.
Yes.
The article was about compensation, not about a whole budget. It was about compensation going from stipend, which was forty five hundred dollars to what you wanted, which was thirty one five hundred. Not to exceed the amount budgeted. That didn't mean dramatically, that doesn't mean. Not to exceed everything that you you've budgeted for computer software, paperclips, et cetera. The amount budgeted by the voters for compensation.
Hang on a minute. So let's go to Kimo.
So I I have the the minutes from the November twenty ninth, but I also have the minutes from December sixth, a couple of weeks later. And there's a.
Which minutes of the lister meeting?
The select board meeting of Wednesday, December sixth.
What year?
Twenty twenty three. So uh. We've been quoting the Tuesday, November twenty nine, twenty twenty three.
That was a select board meeting.
Right. And the following meeting, uh, which the the um. The law is not mentioned at least, no. So whether somebody knew about it or I I don't know. I don't think it matters a lot, but uh. Legal advice was uh meant to be obtained. So in the December sixth. The lister's office, there's a question, what will be the budget amounts for stipender wages? And uh, Laton said fifty six thousand five hundred. Smith said sixty seven thousand five hundred, sixty one thousand five hundred ten for Vincent. Uh, the decision was fifty six thousand five hundred. No change is the form of stipend payment. Uh, the numbers were all over the place back then. I don't think anybody really knew what number should be. I mean, it just, I don't think people actually knew how many hours this stuff was going to take and what to set as a budget for an hourly.
Well, I saw that. I don't think that could have been. It couldn't have foreseen it. And if you if you multiply that up by pretty much any rate, it's a lot.
It's a red herring. Because elected officials are supposed to do the job because they're elected to do the job. And if they know what the town has voted for them for compensation, and if they don't do it. What they don't want to do or they can't do it, no harm, no foul. But that's what's voted and that's what the law is. I mean, so can I call the question to me? Because I think we're going around in circles.
Oh.
Well, let's hear from Priscilla first.
Once upon a time, when my husband was first a Lister, they were paid on an hourly basis. I don't know what the rate was. I don't remember. And it seemed fair to the people who were doing the work and my husband was not a Lister during a reappraisal, so he didn't go through anything like what these people did. And then somebody got in a snit and said, oh, well, we don't want to pay the listeners. They should just go back to a stipend, whereupon he promptly quit because he felt so unappreciated. I think it's very hard to find people as dedicated and knowledgeable as the listeners that we currently have. And I think that this particular board has a history of treating them with a lot of disrespect and a tremendous lack of appreciation. And this just sort of piles on more. They've done an incredible amount of work, as you know, and as you've acknowledged. And here we are with this sort of unseemly wrangling over stuff. And I think we should just be saying thank you, not yeah, 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 I'm going to throw this statue at you and then that statue.
Better shut up.
So I will shut up.
Okay.
But that's why I've been quiet, because it's hard for me to be courteous at this point.
Okay. Well, acknowledge your passion and sense of justice for the way that you see it. Um, man. Okay.
Barry just just
Hang on, no, no, no. Okay. First Marcia, then Kimo. Go ahead.
We all have an obligation. It's in municipal law basics I cited a million times. We have an obligation to know the law. And we also have an obligation, as you've said many times, Priscilla, to make sure that the the voters are getting treated properly. Well, the voters voted for something and that something is being overridden. Now, we can take money from someplace else. That's the only question I think is here tonight. And we can say, okay, we're going to pay them extra, even though it wasn't voted, because we're going to take the money from elsewhere. That pushes the other issue ahead to the budget, and I think we can handle that. But for right now, we're trying to be true to what you always want to do, which is not have the voters. I don't know what the word is. The voters are supposed to be treated fairly.
Like be a good steward of the voters.
Be a good steward of the of their money. And so because we have an obligation to point out the law and to do our research, I do that. All I did was look at the law, send it to BLCT and say, this eighteen eighty five case and this statute, tell me about that. And they did. And I'm telling you, so you all have an obligation to look at that and then make a decision.
I'm going to try one last time here.
Kimo.
I believe that the response you got, BCLT, is based on a stipend, not an hourly rate. When I asked them the difference, they said, if the listeners are telling the select board that they need more budget to be paid, the agreed upon hourly rate and the select board reasonably agrees with the listeners and the board is within their budget discretion to supplement additional paid hours. That tells me we can tell them they can have more hours of pay. I don't see any other way to interpret that.
Well, you didn't ask the same question I did.
Well, I sent them your, I sent them your words and asked them, is there a difference between the stipend and hourly pay? And they're saying, yes, there's a difference.
That's not my words. So it's not my words.
And no, I, those are my words. I sent them the information you gave us and asked them, does this all, does this apply to a stipend as well as an hourly? And they're saying, no, for the hourly, they can ask for more hours. For the stipend, they cannot.
I don't think that that changes this case. And I think if you ask that attorney, does it change that case law?
I sent him your, I sent him your document.
Okay, I think let's let's cut that off. So did you have, you're done on Matt, right? Did you have one more thing to say or?
Sure, I defer to Pam.
Rather than you.
Okay, so so I I I want to come up with a way that everyone feels is fair and I wanted to acknowledge the amount of work that you've put in this past on the reappraisal, because it has been extreme. And I appreciate this discussion because it has at least given me a lot more information to kind of think about. And I do feel like we are constrained by the by twenty four VSA nine thirty two and and also the Article Two, because the way I read Article Two, it seems like the voters approve the change from a stipend to an hourly rate wage not to exceed the amount budgeted. And the way that I understand budgeted, the way that I'm reading budgeted means the line item for wage budgeted. And so it seems like the the town people are saying, that's great, give them an hourly wage, we're capping it at the line item that's budgeted that we're voting for to approve, which is currently the thirty one thousand five hundred. And so and and I don't even, when I'm reading this, I'm I'm not taking away any of this from this, that we're supposed to set an hourly rate. I think that the town sets the sort of the cap of compensation. And and then it's up to you and your department to figure out, you know, what an hourly rate is to work within that cap. Because that's what the voters said in Article Two, you you know, don't exceed this hourly, this yearly rate. And so so, yeah, so so that's that's where we're at here. And I I I'm reading this saying, I'm reading this understanding that I think the lawyer said that we have the flexibility to find money elsewhere, I guess. If we if we feel like it's appropriate to kind of keep paying you at this rate, because we've we've gone over the the wages currently budgeted for you for this year. But I'm not even sure, does that mean find money in the budget anywhere or find money in the rest of the Lister's budget? And is there any money left in Lister's budget for twenty twenty six?
Yes.
There is some left. I imagine that the twenty five grand for contracted services is spoken for.
No, it's not.
No.
No.
Maybe three thousand of that has been, will be spent.
But, okay, so that is, so there is money in the Lister's budget that is left unspent for the rest for the rest of this fiscal year. So that's another piece of information. But I do, I I'm not sure if we're voting on anything tonight. I'm I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we are just gathering information. That was my intention.
Make decisions tonight.
And so and having this discussion now and being able to listen to what you have to say as well and the history that you've said, you know, I appreciate that because I don't think, I don't, I don't find this as like cut and dry. But I do think there are some guardrails here that we've been given.
I'd like to just propose that if we agree to, you know, award the listeners more compensation, they've hit their cap, they're already over. I think there's some work to do. Right? And 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 that work, I would think, would go right up to March. So I think we need some kind of plan. Because I don't think they can work for nothing. And they sort of have worked for nothing because there were many hours, right? That are not, they're not accounted for by this thirty one five, I don't think. There's a lot of hours. But I think we need some way to make it rational, at least that there's some system for payment if we agree that we should go over that cap because we do have that discretion. And I think it probably needs to go to March. I'm just just throwing this out.
Like, would go to the end of the fiscal year for that we're in? Because that's where
The fiscal year that we're in.
As far as the
Would go to June thirtieth?
So can I just quickly add one other bit of information? Because I know it's helpful. One of the things that happened during the work we were doing for so long was that we worked more than a forty hour week. And we didn't consider that overtime. We had put through our time as regular hours. And when we were paid, we were paid up to forty hours at regular and then anything over that, we got time and a half. That was unexpected. That wasn't what we had anticipated happening. We were working straight hours. So a- a- as as a offering of, you know, getting this sorted out, we could work off that overtime amounts that have been paid and just keep us at an hourly rate. So that that brings back down, you know, what we've got.
Well, if we decide to, you know, award the compensation that's over the cap, it will be some kind of negotiation. It has to be. I mean, it sort of seems like, you know, it's a negotiation when you set up your budget for the new year for the voters to decide. But, you know, it it's almost like there's a secondary thing because of the number of hours that were required for the appraisal and the fact that the cap was, I think, low for what you had to do.
Yeah.
But we will have to decide, A, are we going to award money over the cap? Right? And B, what does that look like for a timeline and amount? And it's probably one of those things where if everybody's unhappy about it, maybe you hit it right. You know, since I don't think it's going to be every hour that was worked. I don't think it's going to be. You know, I just don't think we can make everybody happy with it, but we can get maybe a little closer to a fair resolution. But I don't think we can do it tonight either. Pam?
Yeah, Cheryl just covered one of the things that I was going to bring up, and that was that I keep track of everything that I do. I have a spreadsheet. And I have forty one hours of overtime that I was paid. And I can tell you that the value of that was six hundred and sixty six dollars and sixty six cents. Son of the devil. Anyway. So in my read of the Fair Labor Standards Act, elected officials are exempt. So that that was the interpretation that I took away from reading the Fair Labor Standards Act. So certainly that's something that, you know, we're willing to work with the board and work off that, for myself, six hundred and sixty six dollars in in wages. But I I want to drop back to some earlier conversations that have been referred to here. And just for clarity, the listeners requested at least two years in a row to be put on an hourly wage and it was rejected by the board. And Kimo just read that in December twenty three, it was put in for forty five hundred dollars for stipend, even though the listeners had requested to go to hourly wage that year. And it wasn't until February that the board received an answer back from the law firm that the listeners could be put at hourly wage. That's why this special meeting was held in August. So just a little historical reference there. But the fact that the listeners had been paid hourly previously was being debated whether that was even legal. And it seemed kind of silly to me that if you could pay them hourly, then they were put on stipend because a contract assessor was brought in. And now the contract assessor is gone, the listeners would like to go back to hourly. There's the question of whether that was legal and it could have been a lot smoother.
Okay.
And then the the last point I wanted to make is that when the voters did approve that article for the listeners to go hourly, there was no discussion about this twenty four VSA nine thirty two. And that, you know, to say that, you know, it's it's up to the listeners to know the law. Well, no, not really. We're not the legislative body. And so because we didn't, the listeners didn't know anything about the the law, nor did anybody on the select board bring it up. It was it was left to the to the listeners to come up with with something that worked within their budget.
Okay.
So let's, let's, let's just keep the conversation going and work together and try to to work through this rather than having it be this handbutting thing. It doesn't need to go there.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
We would have never budgeted for overtime either, by the way. If we had looked at hours, we would have just taken the straight rate and done that. So that, I just want to bring that back to the to the fact that when you mentioned how many hours we budgeted for, what I mean, that we would have budgeted for, we would have never budgeted at an hourly rate plus overtime rates in our back in our number. So I just want you to be clear on that.
Okay, Marcia and then Kimo.
Once again, the reason that it went to legal counsel is because we knew a town has to vote for compensation.
It could have been in the budget.
It was in the budget. But I'm talking about is that's twenty four VSA nine thirty two. And just for you, going forward, you two need to know municipal officials, this is in municipal law basics, must check off relevant statutes before acting to ensure that they will comply with specific requirements of enabling legislation. And so we went, I mean, clue number one was, we had to go to legal counsel because of compensation. And so that should have been the clue that gave you pause before you, you're not, you're not, you're officials, you're not employees.
I was on the select board when this was done. I wasn't a Lister. And as you know, I haven't, this was never brought up during the select board discussions.
I do know that we said compensation has to go to counsel because it's it's got to be determined that it's voted. We wanted to let the legal counsel to confirm that and they did. So I think you just have to remember, you're officials, not employees. You're not eligible for overtime. You're not subject to minimum wage requirements.
And, hang on, I think Kimo wanted to say something.
I just wondered, is it possible for you to calculate the the expect a number of hours remaining? And tell us whether
I could pull a number out of the air.
So it's not possible. You don't really know.
It's no.
I'm just trying to figure, is there a way to
We're trying to get down to one day a week, eight hours a week, but, you know, things keep coming up that we need to deal with. And so it hasn't happened yet, but that's our goal.
So your normal burn rate, would you get through the entire Lister's budget by the end of the fiscal year? That's my question. In other words,
We could try to pull something together.
I mean, if 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 we're allowed to say, yes, you're going to have extra hours and they come out of the Lister's budget and it doesn't affect any other monies, that seems to me to be something we'd like to know.
We we have every plan to stay within the overall budget. And our use of Amanda, who has been valuable to us, has been reduced. And her current contract goes till December thirty first. And we've only used her once this month because we don't have something for her to do because we're doing the work. And she was extremely helpful when, you know, I was doing most of the work in the Lister's office and she could supplement that. So that line item for her purposes and all is going to be not highly used. I don't know what the number will be by the end, but again, we only used her once this month. We're trying to make sure it's worth it. So there is that line item in the budget that doubt will renew, want to renew the contract for another six months. Because we feel competent enough to do what we need to do.
Yes, I'm feeling much more confident in in learning things that I didn't learn before and be more proficient in software that I didn't use before. So I feel like Amanda's hours have been reduced because of my growth in the position.
Right. And the state has included this new software, the VT Pi. So we've been using three softwares. It's it's stuff that we never could have imagined would complicate the workflow. And and literally pulling a reappraisal firm through a reappraisal instead of them doing what they contracted to do. And we managed all of those grievances. They did very little to manage the grievance process and that fell onto us.
Okay, I think we need to maybe
We had deadlines.
Well, we have to wrap up this agenda item, I think. And we've all had a lot to think about, think about a little more, think about what the next steps might be. But I think no action for tonight, I think was wise. It's not resolved yet, but I, you know, I wouldn't recommend an action tonight. Unless, you know, you Unless, you know, you all are
Well, we won't be meeting for another three weeks.
Into December twelfth.
Is the overage from your overtime enough to keep you going in the interim or?
I don't know. Well, I think you're still being, still being paid, right? I mean, the eight hundred, it's coming from somewhere. It's not cut off.
That was at the end of September, I believe. Seen the October report yet, and here we are, working in November, so. Yeah, I kind of doubt that the overtime would be enough to cover everything. But it would certainly help.
All right. Well, I don't know how to resolve this, but I think.
I just saw that very specific topic. So I think whatever determination is made, we, we have to be very clear with our finance offices to how this is going to get handled because the overtime I know was paid because, um, the finance director felt that was a federal obligation. That, that forty-hour work week, anything over that, by law, you have to pay time and a half for that. You guys obviously submitted those time sheets, maybe without realizing that those were going to be paid overtime on the first one, but then obviously the second and third realized it. So I just want to, I don't want to put our finance director in an awkward position here of trying to have people working off post, you know, payments that have already been made to elected officials. So I think that would be unfair to Barry.
Yeah, well, a lot of this is all coming to light as a function of this discussion, you know, the, the statutory obligation that we didn't know about in August of twenty-four. I didn't know about the overtime until we started talking about it, and I looked up the Fair Labor Standards Act, and it said elected officials are exempt. And so there's a lot of new information coming to light. And we have to figure out what's the best way to move forward.
What would you maybe want us to come back with to another meeting?
I think if we saw the budget, if, if, if we knew that you had this many hours fits within the budget, the overall budget. You know, if, if, if you can say, well, five hundred hours left, and we're burning through that at a rate of forty hours per week, then you've got a hundred, or I don't know, ten, twelve weeks of wages. It seems like a pretty good bet that you'd be able to cover your wages within the overall finance or our listers budget, right? I mean, that would be very useful information for me.
Yeah, okay.
And should assuage other people's worries about having to contribute funds that we have not voted.
A question is, are all, you know, the other pieces of the lister's budget, are they all? Are we authorized, like, were to transfer from any area of the lister's budget or, or not?
Can do reallocations within line items. There is no stipulation that it has to be so within, within a department.
Okay.
But we also have reappraisal funds, and a lot of this work that has been done has been a function of the reappraisal. So the select board could authorize reappraisal dollars to be put over into the wage line item as well.
Okay, so maybe a way to do this rationally.
Plenty of ways to skin this cap.
Oh, Marsha?
I think we're suddenly treating the, the conversation is treating elected officials like they were employees. And I think we need to talk to counsel because we can be, I don't think we can be paying them overtime and treating them like they were employees. They have a budgeted amount voted by the voters. And so I'd like to know from legal counsel. You know, if, it seems to me if they work over forty hours, they, they're doing it to, to do their job. And they have to do it no matter what was voted. They would have had to do it at forty-five hundred dollars stipend or give up the job. And so I'd like to know from legal counsel if we're stepping on anything we shouldn't be stepping on by paying them overtime.
The listers do not, have never asked for overtime, and we're willing to return that money. So you don't have to ask legal counsel, is it legal to pay us overtime? We're willing to give that back.
That's kind of you. I think we should ask legal counsel anyway.
So I don't know, I'm thinking about the, you know, the, the thirty-one thousand five hundred that was voted for pay. Since that cap has been reached, we have to cut it off. I mean, the sort of the other way of thinking about it, rather than working and trying to recover some of the, you know, hours worked through the lister's budget, which I think we probably do have the discretion to do. But the other sort of end of it is like, oh, we hit the cap, that's it. You just cut it off. And is that what you're thinking? Marsha? That we just say, okay, you're up to the cap, that's it. Till the next fiscal year?
I think that's how elected officials normally work normally. They take the job knowing what has been budgeted by the voters. And that's it. And they don't turn themselves into hourly employees.
Okay, well, it's maybe good to keep those two goalposts in mind or two ends of the spectrum, and we'll work something out, but and I don't know what we're going to be able to tell our town manager and finance director, because we haven't really resolved this. So.
There's many, many listers throughout the state of Vermont that are paid on an hourly basis.
It would be good to talk to counsel.
And to see whether they have some recommendations.
The situation, here's what's happened.
My, my, I, I, I'm not sure in this case, that's going to be helpful or, or needed. I, I think the question if I've understood this is we have listers who are still working, and they're still submitting time sheets. So do we continue to pay those time cards and, and, and compensate them at the rate they've set? I think that could be a yes or no tonight from the select board, so that Barry knows what to do when these are submitted. Uh, this question about was overtime paid inappropriately? Again, I think the discretion of the finance director was to follow federal law and pay someone who is earning an hourly wage time and a half when they got to forty hours and over. So the question of, um, working that off somehow, we would have to calculate exactly how much overtime I mean, yes, but I also were in the middle of a budget. I, I hate to dump a bunch of go detective work for, for Barry here. And then I guess the board would have to say, yes, it's appropriate for the listers to work more hours off of the amount they've already been paid, which I think is the question that Barry can't answer. Let's, let's come in. So those are the questions, which I don't think require the legal counsel to, you know, send us a yeah, to me, it's fairly clear. It's just a decision that has to get made.
Pam?
Well, I'm going to speak purely for myself, not on behalf of any other lister. I would be happy to work whatever hours the job entails. I will not turn in a time sheet until this board makes a decision on how to, to move forward. I will just, you know, keep track of my time. And I will hang on to those time sheets. And when the board decides how it wants to, to handle this, whether it's, there's going to be a reallocation to put more money into the wage line item. But again, you know, back to Marsha's point about the cap of thirty-one five, there's no way the listers could have foretold or anyone on the select board that there was going to be seven weeks of intense work. For me, totally two hundred and ninety-six and a half hours to get the job over the finish line. And so, you know, to, to hold us to that thirty-one five seems a little unrealistic given that nobody had a crystal ball to see how this was going to play out.
Right. One more thing about the, the hours that assume that most of those hours, I mean, we also have the, the pay grade increase. So if we are negotiating something or willing to, you know, pay for hours expended after you hit the cap, like what rate would it be calculated at?
I can also tell you how much I was paid, the difference between the two.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm just saying that that would be a factor in figuring it out.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to, to work with you on that.
All right, I'm looking left and right.
I, I kind of want to stay out of this for the most part, but I will say I did submit something into the packet at the end of June that was in the July ninth packet, and I did recommend that you, as the lister board, if you were increasing your wages by twenty percent, calculate how much time that was going to allow you for the rest of the year going forward, foreseeing that there was going to be extra time involved in the reappraisal. So to the point of a crystal ball or no crystal ball, I will just say I did try to foresee that this was going to be an issue with more hours, uh, needed. Higher rates of pay creates less hours available within the budget. So I'll just.
It's a separate factor.
Put that out there.
Okay, can we?
So I guess my, my thinking was that we had a budget we wouldn't exceed, not, you know, specific to a line item. So that, I, I guess that's where I was thinking when all of that was brought up.
Okay, well, I think we've, I think we've pretty thoroughly it's plural issues, right?
But it seems like I'm, that, that, I agree with whoever said it on the floor. If they're going to be, they should either be submitting hours, like, we have three weeks between here and, and the next time we talk about it.
Right.
They can either submit their hours and continue to get paid more than what's in the line item for them, but or they can hold their hours like Pam has offered to do, and that would give us a bit more wiggle room to figure this out. I appreciate that offer. I think that that's a fair, I think that that it would be fair for us to ask if they would, if, if all the listeners would consider doing that, so we can pause, um, realizing that we've, that would make it easier for us to figure things out.
All right, well, you could, you know, listeners can think about that.
But we, we're, we're happy to do it.
I think kind of freezing where we are right now gives us a starting point.
Yes, that would be.
Doesn't make it, it doesn't make anything worse, like, like. You know, it pauses the bleeding.
All right, so Brennan can tell.
Well, I, I think it's up to the listeners not to submit a time sheet.
Barry's. We still just want to know that you'll let her know that we're not going to do it, because she does look for them.
Okay, well, I think we've taken some steps toward each other, and, you know, hope we can work it out. It's a little complicated, and we'll have to keep it separate from your, you know, your plans for the future, which are whole other different deal. And just make sure we're on the two tracks.
Well, I think we don't work it out, but, you know, the other thing that we all have to remember is you, you don't always get everything you want.
No, I, I, that's what I was saying, you know, if nobody's happy, maybe you kind of got that line.
You found the right answer.
So, all right, well, thank you for this conversation and.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Then we'll get back on our would the board appreciate a little break? I'd like to, Ken. We're kind of closer. Or do you want to power through?
Sure.
When the power.
I'm fine.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm okay.
I move to for the minutes from November twelve, twenty twenty-five as presented.
I'm seeing none, I guess we'll vote.
I'll second.
Okay, Marsha, how do you vote?
Yes.
So I think I should abstain because I wasn't there.
That's right. Yep, abstaining. Thank you. Matt?
Yep.
And I mean, yes. Okay, and now we have the warrants. Would someone like to move those?
I move to approve AP warrant number one four one seven in the amount of eighty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty-three cents to be paid from the general fund. AP warrant number fourteen eighteen in the amount of thirty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars to be paid from the town, the appraisal. AP warrant number fourteen nineteen in the amount of three thousand one hundred twelve dollars and seventy-one cents to be paid from the police special equipment fund. AP warrant number fourteen twenty in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents to be paid from the Culver Fund. AP warrant number fourteen twenty-one in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine dollars to be paid from the general fund. And AP warrant number fourteen twenty-two in the amount of two hundred seventy-one dollars eighty-nine cents to be paid from the general fund.
I have a second. Okay. Scott. So, Marsha, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Kimo?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
And, uh, uh, Matt?
Yes.
I mean, yes. And we'll have to remember to sign all of them. There may be a lot of them. It's like a rainbow. And then, yeah, we can start that. Okay, then we have the receipt of correspondence. We have correspondence from young resignation from the developmental review board, and, and thanks for the experience of being on it, that she felt she understood it better. Um, questions for Chris Kupi about the, uh, DPW employees capital planning. And, uh, correspondence between, uh, town clerk Willie Tremany and Brennan Duffy about use of flying carbon copy in correspondence where, uh, people are being encouraged not to reply. And it turns out it's just, it's just not a wise way to communicate, and Billy understands that, and so that's all cleared up. I think that is it.
There was the town clerk's office update.
Yeah.
Three.
Okay, and the town clerk's office update, okay.
Bunch of marriage records, marriage licenses, I like that. Didn't realize so many people got married here.
Okay, would someone like to move to receive the correspondence?
I move to receive all correspondence.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I think that we should expect it would be I think that Chris asked, asked a bunch of, you know, legitimate questions. Um, good questions. I know that we have sort of a policy of um, you know, coming back and answering, answering them, not necessarily answering them on the spot. But I think that, like, we should do as much as we can to find answers either from the town manager's department or from, from us to explain kind of, you know, the answers to the questions that he poses.
Okay, well, maybe that could be done for the next.
Yeah.
Well, if I may, um, so I think some of the questions were answered, because we had asked people to hold off on questions until we had the chance to present the budgets, which I think is done. I received a message from Mr. Kupi saying thank you to the DPW employees for the insight. So uh, again, without trying to answer every single question asked here, uh, I believe he was satisfied with the budget of the capital proposals.
Okay, great. Yeah, it, it was mainly, it was kind of a timing thing?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And thank you, Brennan, for doing that. And also to Chris, he asked a lot of questions, and, you know, a lot of times they're spun on. Everyone wants to know the answer, so. Okay, so let's see. I guess we can vote on this. Marsha, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimo?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I guess. And our last motion is for adjournment. Someone want to? Will move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, give me a second.
Second.
And there will be any discussion on that. Marsha, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimo?
Yes.
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 Yes, and it is it's fifty-five. And rainbow of
Recording stopped.